Okay then, so let's start the October 9th meeting. First item on the agenda is agenda changes. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Nothing. Public comments for non-agenda items, that would be a no. Okay, so item three, we're gonna jump right into growth management scoring system for the water wastewater allocation.
Right, so very much picking up where we left off at the last meeting. I yammered on at you at some length trying to explain what this proposal from the wastewater and water allocation committee was all about. Dan added some flavor and so the hope is that tonight we could go over any additional questions you have and also suggestions. Ralph, for example, had actually made some suggestions for the last meeting that we didn't have a chance to discuss. But perhaps others of you have suggestions for possible revisions in addition to questions as well.
So I wonder if just working through this flooring system is the best way to-
Walk through it page by page, we can do that.
In general, I think this is, this makes a lot of sense. I guess I am concerned about what we talked about at the end of last time. We discussed it about like, you know, what if there aren't projects competing against each other? And so I see that there's a minimum and I guess I'm wondering if that minimum should be significantly higher.
Yeah, I think the only way for all of you to get a sense of where the minimum ought to be is to understand what the scoring system is and then run some examples through it. And that's what the committee did with some past projects to see what, where they would have scored. And we can, we can do that for sure.
Do you have the results of those?
Yeah, can we look at those?
I was thinking Green Street maybe?
We did Green Street, we did the Norris project and I think we might have done Thistle Hill. And no, I didn't bring those scores with me, but it's, it shouldn't be difficult to score them on the fly here. I mean, they're projects that we, that are known. So to actually work through one of those projects and come up with what the score should be, we can do that live, you know.
So those aren't in the minutes? I poked through some of the minutes from the committee, but-
Oh, actually, yeah, they might be. They might be in the minutes. It would be very much towards the end of the discussions if you wanna look at the later meetings. But again, it wouldn't be hard to just work one of these projects through the scoring system. Do you wanna walk through it? There are six scoring criteria. We can walk through each one or we can just jump to trying a project on for size and see how it scores through those. How would you like to proceed, Maggie?
Maybe we should just walk through it to begin with.
Okay.
And just see if, what stands out for people, if there are any, any issues that stand out.
So page one of the scoring system, if you don't have a copy, there, I think there's one left over here. Page one, it's, the title says allocation scoring system. Little explanatory stuff at the beginning and then it dives into the first scoring category, which is public infrastructure. The maximum number of points is 25. And then it goes on from there to tell you how you get that, how you, how you get points. And, and the way this, just logistically, the way this category is set up. This is, uh, this is one of the more subjective ones. It's not like you do this many affordable units and you get this many points. This is, uh, you do more public infrastructure, more important public infrastructure, you get more points. And it also includes a scale that goes from zero, with examples, from zero to 20. But then it has two types of bonus points that would then add to those. And one of, and those are on page two. One of those is called ecological practices and the other is called fiber-ready development. So again, just to be, just to be clear, if a project comes in and, and it's only proposing the public infrastructure that, that would have been required anyways through the regs, like they need to put in a sidewalk and the town's likely to take that over. Or they're gonna put in a road to serve their development, they get zero points. But then we go from there.
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about this last meeting, I can't remember, about the 20 points category. And that's, although, you know, our open, open space standards aren't set in stone yet. But that would be above and beyond-
Correct. The intent with all of these is to be above and beyond what would normally be required. So yes, I think James raised that question last time. So if we, if the select board adopts these open space design standards that actually require certain square footage of, of public space be created, then they'd have to go beyond that to get points in this allocation system.
So does, I, again, looking at the 20 points, so developed public space. Would that, I mean, would, would the developer be able to look at a certain lot that they don't own and say, we will develop that? Or is it something that they need to own?
That's a good question. I, I don't think that, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I don't think that it was, that it matters whether it's on their property or, or somewhere else. I think in most of these, we were assuming that it would be on property that, that the project had control over.
But if they offered to develop a-
But yeah, if they, if, if, for example, I'll give you an example. If Brad Gorbowski is the developer of the Heinsberg Center of the neighborhood and then the Heinsberg Center Development around Kenny Drugs and is doing a next phase behind that. If he were to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna develop that town green on the land that David Lyman donated behind the fire station and I'm gonna help you put sidewalks and a gazebo and some street trees in there. That, I think that would be eligible for this bonus through the allocation system, even though it wasn't on prop, even though it wasn't on his property. Is, Dan, am I, am I misconstruing that or is that your understanding?
And I think I remember we had talked about that and talked about those like situations in particular. Because if there are those opportunities and someone was willing to do it, we didn't wanna say, well, no, that won't count because it's not your property.
But I think most of the conversation focused on a project doing these things on that project.
Yeah.
Sort of remember that.
I don't know off the top of my-
Yeah. Question. Does a developer have to score points in all of these areas?
No, good question. This is very much an à la carte system. So there is a minimum number of points required, but there's no minimum amount that you have to get in any particular criteria. You could get all of your points in, in one.
In one.
I guess in the 20-point one, developed public space, I just wondered like, well, what if they come in and say, well, we want to build this, build a park for you here and we happen to have a park next door to it and, I mean-
Good question, if we didn't need it, so to speak. Right, so this was discussed and that's why at the front end of this, on page one, it, it says that point, after it says public infrastructure, maximum 25 points. Points are awarded for projects that will provide public infrastructure that fits both of the following two criteria. So it's above and beyond what would be required in the regs, that's number one. And number two, is desired by the town as shown or described in the official map, the capital budget, capital improvement plan, the town plan or in the regulations. So that's, they, the committee thought about that and said, we really want folks to do this kind of public infrastructure where we had anticipated it was gonna go. And if there's a second sentence that says, other public infrastructure may also qualify after consultation or recommendation by the select board. So if somebody came up with an idea that we didn't have in our official map and we thought it was the best thing, you know, since sliced bread, but we just hadn't thought of it, there's an option for them to request, you know, points for that. But otherwise, it's gotta be something we were already thinking about.
Or wouldn't want it.
Right.
Cause it could be something we wouldn't, the town wouldn't want.
Well, hopefully we wouldn't put anything on our official map or, or plan for it in our capital budget if we didn't want it. Those, those documents will guide where people can, and what kinds of things people can propose under this criteria.
I guess in the four-point category, there was, it mentioned sidewalks and then in the eight-point category, it mentioned rehabilitation of existing sidewalks. And is that, I'm curious as to why that would get more points? Is it, I mean, maybe it's more desirable to improve the ones we already have? Or maybe it's harder to do sidewalks, like redo a sidewalk?
Yeah, I think the key on that, and Dan, I, you know I like to talk, so just jump in and talk over me if I'm cutting you off. I think the key difference there, James, is the, that, that second part of the eight-point example relates to transportation improvements that address issues not caused by the proposed development. Meaning there's a, there's a piece of infrastructure that, that is, that has an issue, that has a problem. And it's not related to their project, but they wanna help us fix it. And that, I think the thought was, that's more valuable than a project, than a, a project that says, well, I kinda wanna do a sidewalk over here for the benefit of my development anyway. And it's, you know, it might help connect something, so this is something beyond that. I think like an example would be the sidewalk in front of where Brian and Kathy Bouger live, near Kelly's Field Road. The town has identified that as a, as a, as a sidewalk in need of rehabilitation. We just haven't made any progress on it. If, um, let's say Kelly's Field, the owners of that said, hey, we wanna do another pot of development in the, in their back, you know, in the back there at the end of the road, which, which they could do. And they said, as a function of this, we wanna, we wanna bolster our, our chances of getting water and wastewater by, by helping the town fix that section of sidewalk out on 116. That's, that, that would be a real positive thing and that's, that's why this is set up. As opposed to, you know, creating a new sidewalk that might also be valuable, but might not be serving a larger need that was there to begin with.
So I assume this, this is gonna be, you know, developer comes in and this is gonna be sort of a, a long conversation with the plant, with the planning department?
Yes.
That, you know, you know, they'll be looking for a list. Do you have a list of, you know-
Yep, we'll be providing them the official map, the capital budget and plan, any relevant sections from the town plan. And saying, you know, here's the laundry list of everything that Heinsberg is hoping to work on but hasn't gotten to yet.
Including, you know, broken sidewalks and missing-
Right, yeah, Renee's been really good on the sidewalk front of, of making us think about what we currently have and how we need to fix it and maintain it before we go off all excited about new sidewalk projects, like the Richmond Road sidewalk project. And so she had our consulting engineer put together a report where he evaluated all of our existing sidewalks and indicated what needs to happen and approximate cost and all of that should, hasn't yet, but should be making it into the capital budget and plan. And once it's there, it'll be in a document that this allocation scoring recognizes and we can hand to people and say, help us, we'll give you, you know, if it, if it helps you and it helps us and makes sense, we'll give you, we'll give you points, preference points.
Any other comments on public infr- infrastructure?
Well, only that, um, I thought that it's more general. I think my comments, I don't know if those were shared with people or are they not worth talking about again?
You've made comments on this section, we might as well talk about them. Do you have a copy of your own comments?
I don't actually. I mean, it's in that little box somewhere, but I think for me, it was more just, you know, all of these were, I mean, this was a great job, I thought, whoever was on that committee, you know, was really, a really good initiative and well structured. And I, I just thought there was too much emphasis to the detriment of some things that I felt ought to be sort of enhanced. That public infrastructure combined with stormwater, which I view as a public infrastructure issue, that was 45 points right there. And locational things having to do with like greenfield versus brownfield usage or, you know, it's basically that-
Had a lot fewer points associated with it.
It was 10, basically, and I thought-
You'd like to rejigger the point system.
I would rejigger the point system if it were solely up to me and I was the dictator here, yeah.
You are a ninth of the dictators here, so you can make that happen.
So village proximity and redevelopment, I thought that could potentially be rephrased to include, I understand what's, what's being valued there, but I also think some of the design quality issues that we're talking about might find its way into that category and that that category in terms of maximum number of points might be more like 20. And that those points are perhaps taken away from public infrastructure and stormwater as combined, 45 points. So that was my general comment.
So let's, let's, let's make a note of your suggestion to take some points away from this category and reallocate them. And then let's wait on the, discussing the village proximity until we get to that one. Cause I, I, I think you're right and I'd like to flesh out a little bit what are you suggesting on that category. But, um, yeah, probably just hold back, cause I think you'll, you need to understand all the criteria before you then talk about how to reallocate the points. But it's, I think it's fair to say, Dan, you might refresh me if I'm not remembering this, that the allocation committee did go through sort of that prioritization exercise. And it's subjective and this board may feel differently than that committee. But that committee felt like public infrastructure and stormwater were sort of the two big ticket items that Heinsberg was really struggling with and that we oughta incentivize as much as possible. And that's why the points were so high in those categories. That's not to say they couldn't be changed for the reasons you just pointed out.
The way these are written, does it mean that you could get 20 points in public infrastructure and you could get another 20 points in stormwater treatment when you're doing just the same thing and get 20 points for each?
Well, that's a good question, John.
Double counting, I think that's what Ralph was getting at. Why are we giving so much to stormwater in two different categories? Public infrastructure and then stormwater.
The committee had that, that tension of, of whether stormwater should just be in the public infrastructure category or not. And, and I think Andrea and others felt like it was, it was a separate sort of thing. It didn't always need to be public stormwater treatment. But whether there's overlap is a good question.
Yeah, for example, in the 20 points, having infrastructure, having parking and storm, stormwater treatment. Maybe that's the sort of overlap that-
I think in the town plan too, we categorized some of these based on the town plan. And, um, cause I remember we did talk about stormwater and public infrastructure potentially being one. But I feel like based on what the town plan was and the different goals of the town plan, we ended up having, making them two separate categories.
And all of the examples, I think, unless you're seeing something I'm missing, I think all of the examples under public infrastructure avoid using stormwater as an example. You're, you're seeing it in a, in a phrase, Maggie, that is meant to be read, a municipal building.
Right.
With access parking and stormwater treatment. That's not a stormwater treatment piece of infrastructure. That's a building that has all those features along with it.
But I would say that's a perfect example of why we need to use the Oxford comma. Access, comma, parking, comma, and stormwater treatment. You can slap me after the meeting.
But, but, so I think to answer John's question, which is a good one, and maybe, maybe there could be some clarification in here to, to speak to that. I'd be advising an applicant under this particular system that if they, if they want public infrastructure points, it's gotta be for non-stormwater stuff because we have a stormwater category and that's where, that's where points accrue to you for stormwater-related treatment. So if they wanna do a stormwater facility and make it, you know, turn it over to the town or, or, or something like that, they're gonna get their points in the stormwater category, not the public infrastructure. I suppose if on our official map, we identified an area and said, this is where we want there to be a public stormwater treatment facility and they, and a developer came in and said, I wanna build that for you. That's a piece of public infrastructure that's on your official map and in your capital budget and I wanna build it for you. Then maybe you could get points in the public infrastructure category. But, but right now, those are few and far between opportunities. So yeah, maybe, maybe some more clarification would be in order here.
So how does this work for a big project? Do you get maximum points but still not have enough allocation to do the whole project?
Well, the hope is that the, the point system simply decides where you, where you land on the, on the competitive nature of the allocations in any given year. So it just tells you which projects go forward, but are you asking what happens?
It could be a big enough project where you don't even have enough allocation to do the whole project.
Right, so I think-
So is that how you're, is that how you're phasing it?
I think this assumes, I think this scoring system, Dennis, just assumes that, uh, what we have in terms of capacity is sufficient and it's just sort of, hey, how do we line people up? And whether, whether it's sufficient to meet that particular need or not is not germane, is not part of the-
Not part of the allocation system.
So you're, I think you're asking two questions, cause that's the right answer to the one I was trying to answer, which is exactly what Ralph said. But I think your other question is, what happens for a project like Blackrock that comes in at sketch with a master plan and we don't have enough allocation to serve the whole thing and they're likely to phase it? But at the sketch plan level, they're showing you the entire thing. How do you score that project when really they shouldn't get points for the things that they can't actually do?
Right, but like stormwater and stuff could possibly have to go in before they phase, you know what I mean? Might be part of the second phase. You might do it in the first phase, but it's for the-
I, I think that it's, I think you're raising an interesting point. I think that there's gonna need to be some clarity in the review of this scoring as to what part of the project, for larger projects that are gonna be phased, the scoring will be based on. So that it's, so that it's really an apples-to-apples comparison. We wouldn't want a very large project like that to out-compete everything else when in fact they're only gonna build the first phase of it and that, you know, might compete much more favorably with a smaller project.
But like the next phase might be harder to get as many points, cause the stormwater stuff has already been put in.
Was built in the first phase, right.
I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm guessing.
That's it, those are good questions. I don't know how to deal with that.
I could see that's where-
That's what I was thinking.
Or it could be the very public infrastructure thing that they're suggesting. They do is the thing that gives us increased capacity, you know? Which, hey, we're gonna give it to you and then you're not gonna, you know, and per the allocation system, yeah. And you're gonna hand it to some other project because they're doing it better than we are, you know?
Some of these things will translate to later phases. So specifically in the stormwater category, you'll see that in stormwater, it's more about going above and beyond the standards than it is about giving us some municipal stormwater system. So in phase one, if they are going above and beyond the standards, that phase will get those points, you know, when they ask for allocation. When they come back later for allocation for the next phase, if they are still going above and beyond the standards in that part of the development, they will also get those points again. If for some reason they decided, no, we're gonna cheap out at the, on the second phase and just, you know, do it the regular old way, well then they, they wouldn't get points in that phase for that next set of allocation. But yeah, it's an interesting point about public infrastructure and if they were to dedicate something upfront that was very valuable to the town and they got a whole lot of priority points for that first set of allocation and then three years later or five years later came back for the next phase and like, well, I already gave you that, I don't have anything more to give. They would, yeah, they could potentially be in a, not as, an advantageous a position in the second go-round. I don't know how to deal with that. That's a good point.
But the way I'm reading this, under the public infrastructure, the 20 points, the first, there's a sentence that says, developed public space, public buildings or community infrastructure, period. And then examples are given, which I don't interpret as, as anything more than kind of guidance rather than the rule itself.
Yep.
And it, and it says, a municipal building, as Maggie said, with access, parking and stormwater treatment. But that's all associated with a municipal building. You're doing a municipal building. But that's only an example. We've said, developed public space, buildings, public buildings or community infrastructure. Are we defining stormwater systems as public infrastructure? Do we actually make that definition? Ralph said he considers it to be public infrastructure. I would too.
It, it depends on whether it is infrastructure that we have called out as wanting on our official map and in our capital budget. So I guess the example would be Lyman Park. Remember when we talked about the official map changes and we thought maybe the northwest corner of Lyman Park could be redesigned as a stormwater treatment for all that runoff coming off of Lyman Meadows condos and Papa Nick's and Lyman Meadow Park Road? So that's an area we've designated on the official map that we wanna do stormwater treatment. If a developer came in and said, I wanna, I wanna do that for you. Let's say it was Kelly's Field again, cause they're nearby and they're like, yeah, that'll help us in terms of our stormwater. So we wanna help you do that. I think they could make the argument that is, that is community infrastructure and they should get points under the public infrastructure category. Your question was, would we then turn to stormwater and also give them points under that? And I, I would ask that question back to you. Do you see examples in the stormwater category that, that, you know, qualify for points based on that? I'm not sure.
I would think that they shouldn't get double points. Seems like we could put, write that in.
Yeah, the way I look at the stormwater treatment section, it talks more about going above and beyond the treatment standards, the standard practices. Maybe I'm missing a, a community infrastructure piece in here that's, that's really there, but largely, here's, here's the example I'm thinking in my head. So Kelly's Field comes in, they say, we'll, we'll help, we'll help build a store, a public stormwater treatment facility on that corner of Lyman Park. Give us points under the public infrastructure category. We say, yep, it's on the official map, great. And then they say, well, we're gonna build it to meet some basic standard. And we're gonna say, and, and we're gonna say, well, if you do that, you get zero additional points under the stormwater category. But if they say, well, we want it to be a whiz-bang system that does all these special, you know, that way, goes way above and beyond, then I think they could make the argument that they should get points in both categories. That's, that's just an idea. We could clarify this simply by saying, no double dipping. And, you know, you get points in one category only for, you know, particular infrastructure. That would simplify things, we wouldn't have to think about it much.
Or we could put it in one category.
Or we could do that, yes, that's true. We could collapse, we could collapse. It's just that again, the way the, the allocation committee came up with the stormwater treatment category, it's not about public infrastructure, it's about level of treatment.
Right. Well, the way you described it, Dan, doesn't seem like there's anything wrong with them getting points in both places. If it's, if, if the stormwater one is- If it's, if, if the stormwater one is about the quality of the treatment.
That, that's, I, you read through it and, and, you know, quality check what I'm saying, but I, I think that was the intent with the stormwater section. We went through a couple of different versions of the stormwater section and got some feedback from the state stormwater regulators and, and tried to work some of those in.
Well, responding to what James said, I mean, who, who decides, do we have a standard that says, this is the baseline standard, and here's what would be above and beyond?
Yes, that's what these try to call out, so it says the state manual, and, and our regs are the base, and then, and then it goes up from there. So like, you get a, you get a couple of points if you're under ten thousand square feet, and you choose to meet the standard that you would've had to have met at ten thousand. You get some more if you, if you're utilizing green stormwater infrastructure, not just catch basins, culverts, and detention ponds.
I guess the twelve-point category there under stormwater, it notes developing stormwater systems outside of the development, so. In that case, they, seems like inappropriately they could be getting.
That could be, that could be a double dip for sure, yep. That, that category of twelve points was, was really, yeah, I mean, it was designed to help, help address a situation that maybe nobody else was gonna address, and was off the property, but was something they, they could, they could tackle. So for example, we've got no treatment of stormwater rolling off of 116 in a certain area, and a developer comes in and does a project and says, I can receive that stormwater into my project and, and treat it. I don't have to, but I can, and I'm willing to do it. Can I get some points for that? That's what that category's for, but you're right, in the example I gave with Lyman Park, you could, you could make the argument that it was doing both, and that feels a little more like double dipping cuz the, the quality level isn't being adjusted, it's just the opportunity.
I ask this, something about, so they could come in and say, oh, we're gonna donate a fire truck?
Yes, that would be public infrastructure category.
It's all well and good, but then the town has to budget for maintaining that vehicle.
Right, again, they can, they can, they can propose to buy us a fire truck, but only if we want a fire truck. Right now, we do want a fire truck, so if somebody came and said, you know, we wanna give you a quint, what's, what's the fires department calls these multipurpose ladder truck things, we would say, great. We might also have the conversation of, we're gonna take your money and put it in a bank for a little bit because we don't have a building to put it in, but it is in our, and it is in our capital budget to, to, to buy that truck and expand the fire station.
Assign them points now, even though we're not gonna receive the fire truck for two years, et cetera.
Yeah, especially since we're collecting impact fees on all, all new building in Heinsberg is paying into a fund to help, help us buy that truck and build a larger station to house it.
On that, in that vein, like, what about, would it be appropriate for a developer to, like, pay into a fund, like a maintenance fund for existing infrastructure?
Interesting idea. We didn't talk about that one, did we, Dan?
Yeah, I don't remember if we talked about, I think we wanted to potentially avoid running into situations where we, developers are basically just writing checks. And I think it was more about scoring points based on, you know, what's in the town plan.
And actually delivering.
And, yeah, and actually delivering.
I don't know, James, that's an interesting concept about, you know, ongoing maintenance. Yeah, I thi, I agree with Dan, I think the, the committee was focused on getting Heinsberg the infrastructure that we, we know we want or, and, and need, but haven't been able to make happen yet. Versus, you know, helping with, with ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, I can see that doing projects seems different than purely buying your way into your own project.
Plus, I think, at least in my mind, and certainly in the developer's mind, the development they bring increases the, the value of the property and increases the tax revenue that we realize from that property. And I wish we had a fiscal analysis so we could make sure we know where the, where these things all shake, you know, sugar out, or sugar off, but but the idea is that ongoing maintenance should be funded by that increased revenue from taxes, you know what I mean? So we get a hundred new houses, and we've got a point seven-five miles of new sidewalk. Well, we really hope that the revenue coming in from those hundred new houses is offsetting the additional cost for us to plow those sidewalks in the winter.
But that's a hope.
It is a hope, and, and analyses that have been done in the past have said that residential development tends not to actually pay its way. It, it's a net loss for the community on the, on the books. I haven't seen any recent analyses that, that look, that talk about that, I'd be interested in seeing that. But I'd also be interested in what you all recommended to the select board with your official map proposal, which was, you know, first thing, here's our proposal, but, but please hire someone to help us run these numbers and understand, you know, how it's all gonna come together.
And take care of their own development.
And that's how many of them are. The town typically doesn't take over sidewalks and roads unless those roads and sidewalks connect to public infrastructure that we wanna get the, the rest of the community to.
But in the village, pretty much, the road, we usually end up taking those roads over.
All we've taken over is the Farmall Drive area and the Thistle Hill roads. But the reason that we did that was because they connected to, to public amenities that we were interested in. We haven't taken over Lyman Meadows Road.
No.
Or Lyman Park Road, even though we do have a public facility in Lyman Park.
But back then, they weren't doing that. Now, I think that's.
There's definitely a, a, there's been more of an appetite to, to at least consider it. But I think the select board is very much on your page, Dennis, they, they.
Like not.
They would like not to have to take those roads over if they didn't, if they don't need to.
Personally, I think in the village that the town should be of what, this is a lot of what we're talking about, that the town should.
Yeah, there's a control, there's a control positive to owning the roads, but there's a fiscal, fiscal negative. Yeah.
A municipal well is supporting infrastructure, does that mean if Blackrock drills that well for us, they then have to provide the piping to get it where it needs to go?
Yeah, where are you?
Page two of six under twenty points, last.
Right, so, yeah, that's, that's written to me not just the well, but the infrastructure to actually make the well possible.
Hasn't that been in negotiations?
Yeah, I mean, Blackrock is, is way ahead of the, of anything we're gonna do here. They have already given us a well, and that well looks like it's gonna be a good water source, so.
So are they now, you're negotiating for them to provide to get the water to the town facility?
We are, we are figuring out whether the well will in fact pass muster with the state, and then we are figuring out how much to set the allocation and connection fees to pay for all that infrastructure to connect it. The idea is that we want new development like Blackrock to pay, we'll take out a bond, and that new development, as they connect to the system, will help pay the annual bond payments. Yeah, so.
Only those people or everybody in the town will be?
The hope is that it's just new development, that we're gonna have enough new development that it'll, it'll pay for that infrastructure. That's the hope anyways.
So that would be the connection fees?
Allocation and connection fees, we, we charge, I think, twenty-five bucks a, a gallon for, for, for allocation fees, and then we have a fixed amount, like two thousand bucks for a connection fee. So we collect a lot of money in those allocation and connection fees. And the Blackrock developer, the principal, Ben Avery, has told us in the past, he's like, we, we know that's the cost of doing business, every time we build a house, we're gonna pay you a connection fee, and upfront, we're gonna pay you allocation fees. None of the agreements that the town has entered into with Blackrock exempt them from that process. Those agreements were just collaborative to get the well drilled and see if it would work. They're still on the hook to pay all the fees that, that everybody else would have to pay to connect.
So in the end, the people that purchase the homes pay.
Absolutely, it's, it's definitely pass-along, you know, it's not, it's not like they're gonna sell the homes at a loss or something, so. So Ralph, you had some other comments on page one about incentivizing road creation. Did you wanna, did you wanna advocate for maybe not granting some points to making roads when we wanna be a walkable pedestrian-focused village?
Yeah, that was what I was trying to say, I don't think I said it very well there, but you know, you, you develop property and you have to make a road, typically. So I'm presuming that's sort of a neutral, that's not gonna get you points per se. And, you know, on rereading, I think what is mostly being discussed there is sort of over and above what you'd be providing as a, as a, as a, you know, road, an accessway to a, to a new development, a series of structures presumably. It's some of these other things, the I, I, I didn't want us to get into incentivizing the construction of roads when at the same time, we're really trying to perhaps diminish or decrease the prevalence of roads. And I think there's the other thing, and I'm maybe not as well-informed, maybe, maybe we all aren't, on just, you know, as I think about these things, or sometimes observe in other communities, how the roads are working and how the roads are working with all those other things that we're trying to get enhanced, you know, sidewalk, bicycle movement, public transportation, all those sorts of things. And also just the construction of the roadways themselves, you know? Like, I, I was just reading something the other day about sort of different kinds of road profiles depending on what those roads are serving. You know, obviously, in our community, 116 has a pretty prevalent character as things, as more things perhaps happen alongside of it, you know, how does that road change? We've done a little bit of those kinds of improvements on the west side of the road, you know, when we did the sidewalk from the Charlot Road to the school. You know, the defined character of different streets within our community, what, what, how they're functioning, you know?
But in terms of, in terms of the, the scoring system.
Yeah.
Are you?
I didn't know what I was saying when I made that.
What's it gonna say? So, so you're, you're comfortable with the?
I, I think so, yeah. But I do think that this other point, this sort of, maybe has nothing to do with the scoring system, it just has to do more with good planning. We have sort of road standards, as you've pointed out many times, but something that's a little more definitive in that category, I think, is required. And perhaps exemplary adhesion to those standards on the part of development might be something that
To give points for.
To give points for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not convinced we're ever gonna get there, but I'm convinced that the right way to do it is, is to, is to have very clear and, and defined road standards that include sidewalks, as you mentioned here, and, and, and typical street sections that we're gonna work on with this, with our architectural and streetscape design standards. And that we just codify those, and it's not a, you don't get points for meeting them, you just have to meet them.
Right, yeah.
And they'd be different for different types of roads, it's kind of what Jo, what John was getting at when we were talking about the, the official map and how to describe each of those segments. Well, I wanna see a, a typical for each of those segments, and you just have to meet that, you know?
And you don't get any points for it.
Right, it's just a requirement, that you, that you do it that way, so that it all sort of comes.
That's a much better, that's fine.
Yeah, let's make sure we, we do that in the design standards.
So what happens with, in that public infrastructure on page one, where we get down to four points? You get four points for having roads or sidewalks? I don't think you should get any points for having roads or sidewalks. You gotta, you have to have roads to get to your buildings that you're building, you're developing, don't you? I mean.
Well, I think it's saying, John, roads, sidewalks, or multi-use paths, or some method of movement that provide access to public spaces, facilities, or that connects to existing public transportation infrastructure. So it's, it's those things providing better access to some of these public amenities.
Then you get a point.
So Dan and Alex, is that what, is that what it means?
If it just goes off into some empty lot.
Right.
So Dan and Alex, is that, is that what, is that what it means, roads or sidewalks?
Yes, whether the semicolon usage is proper or not.
It is not, so, again, let's talk.
Should be a hyphen, I guess, but an, or, or a different word.
Well, as Ralph said, that, that provide, you know, that provide.
Maybe a word that just says that. Yes, it's, that's what it's meant to mean, and remember, this is all premised on items one and two at the beginning of this that say, it's gotta be above and beyond what, what the regulations would require, and it has to be desired by the town as shown on our official documents, so there cannot be a road to nowhere, unless we put a road to nowhere on our official map. So yeah, it's, it's a road or sidewalk or improved path that provides access to public spaces or connects to existing public transportation, and is on our official map, and is above and beyond.
So change the punctuation.
Okay, yes. Add the word that, get rid of the semicolon.
You guys all need to know that this is the first time in my entire life that I've taken an existing document and sort of like typed some things on.
I was impressed with that, I wondered how you did that.
I, I crossed things out accidentally, the font's different, you know?
But I give you credit for doing that.
So I was feeling like a real, whoa.
There was one page on my computer when I opened it up, oh, it's still here, on page four.
What the heck is he doing there?
What is this?
Yeah, me too, I wondered.
What does it say?
I think I was getting rid of that or something.
No, it was, it was, I was bored with all the horizontal lines.
Oh, okay.
All right, so getting back to infrastructure, I have a, just something to, a point about under bonus points, ecological practices, the, the whole energy section, I think, might need a little tightening up. But this, I just wanna make sure that, you know, integration of ecological practice to improve water quality, reduce the use of fossil fuels, or help sequester carbon. I think we just need to be careful that there isn't double dipping between that, those bonus points and the, the energy section that, that follows.
Well, I'm gonna ask you a question that goes beyond that. Do you understand what this means?
What ecological practices means?
Yeah, what, what those two sentences actually mean. Could you give me an example based on that of, of what somebody would actually do to gain these up to three bonus points?
Integration of ecological practices.
Improve water quality, wouldn't that be rain gardens? Reduce fossil fuels, go to wind or solar?
I don't know about carbon.
Well, I have some idea of ecological practices, you know? What the tools are, I'm not, you know? What, what, what those practices might be appropriate to a community like ours, I'm not always so sure.
Improve water quality would be under stormwater, wouldn't it?
Sure seems like it.
Maybe it's vague.
Maybe there's another way, though, that you could do it.
Maybe it's vague for a reason, you know, for, for technologies that haven't yet been developed yet, ecological practices that.
So, giving somebody the opportunity to be creative.
Treehouses for the future, I don't, I don't know.
To sequester carbon, you have to grow a bunch of trees, right?
Well, there, there are different ways to sequester carbon, growing trees is, I guess, is one, but I threw that question back at you because I, I just reread that, and I don't, I'm not quite sure I would know how to guide an applicant into getting those points. Dan, do you remember what?
No, I don't remember that part of it.
Yeah. I remember we had some big thinkers on this committee, and I'm pretty sure this came from one of them, so I wanna diss that, but at the same time, if you were talking about tightening some of these things up, you have to know what it is before you can tighten it up.
Right.
I'm gonna at least put a big question mark there.
Yeah.
The fiber ready development, I guess I didn't understand how that could be a greater good thing, like, man, I can see how that could make. The residents, the new residents more desirable, but I'm not sure how it would. Help the, help the town, I mean, I can see maybe if it was a commercial building incentivizing attracting. More commerce.
It actually could be though, um someone. Could be able to work at home if these lines are available, like I have a son in Portland, Oregon, and he totally works out of his home because.
He's got high speed internet.
Yeah, really good, and it makes his life nice.
Do you remember, Dan, is that, I think this was Jeff French uh suggestion.
Cause he's in high tech, yeah.
I think it was kind of part of that conversation.
Well, I don't necessarily understand it either, but I, I know, I know some of our.
That's.
Our employ, you know, our employees. You know, they have access to our system, and probably lots of people do.
From at home.
Yeah, and if they're in a community that doesn't have particularly a great service. They're gonna move somewhere else, you know.
Exactly.
Maybe.
Like, like down where I live, it's not very good.
I think there was, I think the thought was that some developers might build an, a, a number of buildings. And, and run the, the utilities, the broadband utilities with a cheaper, slower kind of uh. Line, um whereas if we, if they ran it with, if they put fiber in, um which is sort of the, the cat's meow of, of broadband infrastructure. Then you could have all those benefits, you know, for home occupations, for businesses that would locate all of those things, but. It, it's harder to rewire a neighborhood after all that stuff has gone in, so why not encourage them to wire it up? Top of the line, you know, first.
We could always uh. Maybe reconsider ecological practices and um beef up the energy section and give six points to the fiber ready. Development.
Yeah, if you wanna leave it in there.
But the ecological practices kind of gives people an opportunity to be creative, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah. Have you, has anybody seen that little film about the big little farm, it's kind of an idealized sort of thing, but I think. Not that I'm knowledgeable about ecological practices, but the sort of relationships between microbes and. All sorts of different factors in nature when. Constructively approached and knowledgeably approached can have some incredibly. Redeeming and um. Yeah, some really good effects, I guess, is the gist of it. Do you know the film I'm talking about, have you seen it?
I, I know the one you're talking about, I haven't seen it, but I've seen it advertised.
Because it's sort of like, when you do this, then you screw up that, and so then you fix that, but yeah, then you're back to screwing up that, and sort of like. You know, the normal sorts of things, but it's pretty interesting.
Are we done with infrastructure, or are there any more comments on the infrastructure section?
So you, you were mentioning the ecological practices and potentially. Bucketing that with the energy efficiency.
Well, I, I think just.
Renewable energy.
Yeah, maybe comparing the two and seeing if there's any overlap.
And so I think this is a similar situation with. The stormwater treatment. The section is where the renewable energy efficiency and renewable energy is more based on. Following the state standards and then based on what the standards are going above and beyond, so for example, if you were gonna. Build a home with, you know, the Vermont state standards.
Right.
You know, what if, which is whatever we would require, you wouldn't get any points, but if you were going to build that home. And based on what the scale was, and I forget what, they have a, a scoring system.
Yeah, they changed them a few years ago.
Then you would get points for that, not necessarily additional. You know, additional energy efficiency um. Infrastructure or projects, but making your project more efficient.
That makes sense at all. Very objective, um. Meet the standard, get these points, whereas these ecological practices in the context of public infrastructure is a little more. Uh subjective and, and allows for creativity, is also a little squishy, harder to put pin down. I, I wouldn't, I, I think Dan is sort of saying, don't add it to energy, I, I, I wouldn't add it to the energy category, it's of a different type. Could be its own category, anyway.
So do you, is there, people saying they don't like it the way it's written now? I'm a little confused.
Well, I think Maggie's comment was maybe tighten it up, my comment was, I don't think I fully understand how to guide an applicant, so.
Yeah, so you want more explanation?
Yeah, I think I need to go back to the committee member who suggested it and get a little more.
What is ecological practice?
Give me two examples of, of how that would, how that would happen in a development.
That would help, that would help.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll talk to Andrea.
How about job creation, any comments on?
This one is also much more objective, whereas the first category was, here are examples, but it could be something different and the, and the DRB is gonna have to. You know, score it on this zero to twenty with bonus points, this one, there's no. There's no subjectivity in it, you just get points for certain numbers of jobs.
My question about that category is how do we monitor that? How do we confirm that in fact, five new jobs were created and there are five people that weren't there before now working there?
A little tough.
Just, you know.
It's a good.
Who watches that number, who? Asks for what information from them, you know, give us your weekly pay schedule and show us. These people were here before, these are new people, I, I don't know, I mean.
I don't, I don't remember us, Dan, um solving, cracking that nut, what I remember is that there was a lot of discussion that it would, in order to get the points. It would have to be based on a, on a development that was not a spec development, but actually had a, a real business that was going to be locating there, so for example. When Brett Grabowski built the Kenny Drugs um area, Kenny Drugs was there at the table, they wanted to be there and they said, this is what we're gonna build. Or this is what, you know, and so they had numbers, but at the same time, he wanted to build that building next to Kenny Drugs where the Bristol Bakery went, and he didn't have a tenant for it. It was just built on speculation, so the committee said, in an example like that. Uh we could give you job points for the Kenny Drugs if you told us, you know, how many jobs would be created. But you, we wouldn't give you any points for the other commercial building next to it, cause you don't have an actual plan, so if you want allocation upfront for that. You know, you can, maybe you can get it, but you're not gonna get points uh in this system.
So they have to already have their leases?
I don't know, yeah, that might be an interesting thing to add in here to try to address John's concern, I mean, that, my point is only that we talked about addressing it on the front end. And not so much about uh enforcement on the back end.
And I wonder also how, what happens over time when things change, I think of NRG. That used to have more employees.
Yep.
In their building, and because of their business worldwide.
Sure.
They cut back, so.
I don't think you can control that, John.
I don't think you can either, and so how do you justify? How do you justify assigning extra points for jobs that disappear?
But nothing's ever guaranteed, you know?
It's called optimism.
Optimism, yeah.
It is definitely a point, a point in time decision that's happening, it's a, show me that you have a lease or a business plan or both or something. With, with a number of jobs that, that makes sense and isn't, you know, ridiculously pie in the sky. We will reward that with priority for this allocation, and then once you get the allocation, it's anybody's guess as to what's actually gonna happen.
You can really police it after that.
I'm probably influenced by. Promises that have been made by people in government that they're gonna create.
Yeah.
Some thousands of jobs and it doesn't happen.
Yeah, there's a state program right there.
Get elected because they said they're gonna create jobs, I mean, I just, it, that's probably what's influencing my caution about this.
Well, there is a state program that does a similar thing, I don't know if it's the veggie program, it's a, but it's a program that incentivizes and, and actually doesn't provide priority for. Waste war allocation, but, but actual money to incentivize businesses to come here and, and, and create jobs, and then there's always that question of, well, what if you? What if in day one you had less jobs than you said you were gonna have, and what if in year two you close?
Yeah.
But they're not gonna give you the money back.
Right, yeah.
It's gone, unfortunately.
Be cautious to give it the money in the first place, then.
What's that?
Then be cautious about giving them the money in the first place, if in fact, it's not gonna be a solid operation that's. That's gonna really bring jobs to your community.
Right, but all it would take is the economy turning around and.
Well, talk to the people in the Northeast Kingdom about the jobs that were promised up there.
Right, exactly.
Any other comments about the job creation?
I guess another possible. Problem would be, you know, if it's not a net job increase, let's say that Hanford and Lammons didn't have an agreement. Hanford came in, the Lammons went out of business, you know, the net, we're incentivizing a business. Bringing in jobs, but the net is not what.
Right.
Right, doesn't result.
You don't want to incentivize a business that's gonna put other businesses out of business.
And we definitely didn't, we didn't go there, if I remember right, Dan, I mean, we, we live in a. We live in a, in a capital, capitalistic economy and, and market, and I don't know that we can. I don't know that we can have that litmus test that says, you know, Bristol Bakery, you're gonna, you're gonna help close COVALS, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do anything good for you, even though you're bringing new jobs. So I, unless you guys have an idea of how to address that, I, that's a tough one.
Well, the other thing that you keep reading and you get down into the, the living wage, now we're, we're saying you can get some bonus points. If you, if the jobs you provide are also providing a living wage, how do we watch that?
Right.
How do we confirm that that's actually happening?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a good point.
It seems like there's some looseness in there that we're giving away some benefits to get things that we don't really.
I think it's kind of like pie in the sky, it sounds really good, but the reality of it, not so good.
But, but.
Right, you're right.
There is a little bit of faith that we are, that we are, that we are using with, with new businesses that wanna come to town. And I think what the committee talked about is if in a given year, and this just isn't gonna happen, cause we don't see a lot of development here, but if in a, if in a given year, we have one business that comes in and says. I pay my workers minimum wage, you know, about eleven, you know, a little under eleven bucks an hour, and we have another business with the same number of new employees that says. I, I pay my workers twenty-five bucks an hour, I'm a different kind of business. Wouldn't we still wanna prioritize the, the one that says that that's what they do and can demonstrate that, you know, they provide some data to that effect? And take it on faith that we would, we wanna value that more than the, than the one that just openly says that we don't pay that much?
It is in the bonus points section, so that, it's not defined, but the allocation committee can. Decide how many bonus points, maybe they give a lot to the guy who has a guaranteed employment base. And not so many to somebody who said, well, our plan is to grow this such and such, and we expect we'll get these many people in the first year, and then by the fifth year, we'll be up to. More people, you know, so the allocation committee is left with a decision, how, how solid does this seem? And we'll give bonus points accordingly, if it seems real solid, then we'll give them a bunch.
Yeah, you raise an interesting question, though, that I don't think we talked about, Dan, which is, and it's frequent for businesses to say, in year one, it will be this number of jobs. In year five, we anticipate it'll be this number of jobs and, you know, and.
And I understand that that's what businesses have to do, I mean.
No, but my point is, should we recognize that in the, in this and, and have, you know, have some sort of limit, where we're like, we, we're not gonna give you points based on a twenty-year projection, cause we know, you know. Most new businesses fail in, in the first year, uh so, you, you know, your number of new jobs is gonna be based on your. First three years or your first five years and projections or something, I don't know if we, if that, if that would make sense to, to add.
I do remember talking about situations where if, you know, there is a business not located in Heinsberg, but looking to expand. That wants to expand their business in Heinsberg, you know, they aren't necessarily gonna be able to. Guarantee jobs, but they at least have good information with their current business on some of the other criteria. And we wouldn't want to, you know, turn those types of businesses away, um because if they are in a situation where they're gonna be building a new building and they're willing to pay for that. Then obviously, you know, clearly they have um a good business going.
And we've got some good examples, I mean, you know, just behind us here, you know, over the last, I don't know how many years, but um Vermont Smokin' Cure, Kimball Brook. The beer. Public House, I mean. I, I thought this was a really important category, and I, I think I didn't articulate them as well to myself. The limitations, you know, the inability to really predict and solidly verify over time. At first, when I, I looked at it, I said, ah, you know, job creation, that, that's a really important category, we ought to give it more points. But I think maybe by keeping the points kind of where it is, it acknowledges the fact that some of this predictor is. A little frail and is gonna ride with all sorts of other circumstances that can't be controlled, so.
True.
The bonus points, I guess I'm feeling like it should be based on a percentage of the other points, like. Say, both say the, like, majority or two-thirds, so say you create two jobs and both of those are. Um, you know, well-paying, living wage jobs. Or you create twenty jobs and eleven, but either way, you would get, you know, the bonus points. So I guess I was thinking maybe it should be like an additional ten percent of the points. Well, in the bonus point section, it says, two points will be awarded if the majority of the new jobs created. Were the following. But the majority would be, the net increase would be a lot different if the majority is, you're talking about the two jobs that were created. Or, or if you're talking about the majority of twenty jobs, either way, you'd get two points. But it seems like there's more value. If it's more jobs. So it should be.
Yeah, I suppose there's a, there's a scenario where you could, you can imagine. Two new jobs being created that are in a priority sector, pay a living wage. Provide employee benefits and. Uh are lo, and is locally owned, and they would get, um if they did all those things, they would get two points for the two new jobs, but then they would get. Two bonus points for priority sectors, um four bonus points for livable waves. Two for employee benefits and two for local ownership, so what does that round up to, that's four plus four is eight, that you would get, they would get ten bonus points and only two sort of base points, cause there were only two jobs created. And that, and this, this category maxes out at uh um fifteen points, so you're saying, shouldn't we? Why do we, why do we allow a very small number of new jobs to get that many points, shouldn't that be reserved for, you know, more jobs, you know, somebody creating five or ten or twenty jobs? Yeah.
The one where it says local ownership?
Yeah.
Why are we, I, I don't like that, one of the business owners is a Heinsberg resident. Most of the businesses that I think that have been created that we've kind of. Most of the businesses that I think have been created that we've kind of talked about came from somewhere else. So just to be a Heinsberg resident, I don't think you should get any more than anybody else would. I just, what is the reason for that? Do you follow what I'm saying? It's kind of elitist. That's maybe not the right word, but.
I think.
So if you're a Heinsberg resident, you're elitist.
I I think the idea is is the the often repeated argument that local ownership, with local ownership, money that goes through that business circulates in the local economy more effectively than when the owner is outside of town and that money leaves leaves the town. You know, like the money that you're a local business owner and the money that people spend at your lumberyard, then you take in and go to Papa Nick's and have lunch, and then it gets circulated there, whereas if if you lived in Manchester, Vermont, you would probably not spend it here.
But your employees in this town might spend it here.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, I I I think you're advocating maybe getting rid of this.
Yeah, I don't, I just think it seems a little, you know, like, oh, well, if you're a Heinsberg resident, then you're going to get more. If you are a Heinsberger, you're going to get more points. And I'm just thinking that a lot of the businesses that we've talked about tonight that have been created didn't come from local folks, Heinsbergs. They came from somebody else out of town. And it's been great that they've come into our town and done this, and I think we want to.
Right, we want to value them.
We want people to come to our town, right? And maybe grow, yeah.
I guess I think that, you know, say, a Papa Nick's is a more valuable business than, say, if that was a Denny's.
True, I agree with that, but.
And also, I don't know, giving a leg up or a couple of points, you know.
It's not really a leg up, but to to local businesses that are saying, we want to stay here and grow here.
But that doesn't require a local residency.
No.
And that one also says local ownership slash materials. So the materials, I like that part.
Yeah, I like that, John.
Local materials, food.
Yeah, I do like that.
Whatever, so that could be effective, but.
Yep.
You would you would be on Marie's wavelength of getting rid of the preference for Heinsberg residents?
I I think so. I think that's not.
It is not. For some reason, it's I just find it a little distasteful, but. And I'm a local business owner.
Does that either encourage or discourage someone who doesn't live here from starting a business in Heinsberg? I don't I don't think so. I think somebody starts a business in in any location because of the conditions in that location. The land is the right price. There are customers that are right next door. Whatever, not whether they live there. I mean, that's convenient. I understand that, but.
I think if it were more than two bonus points, I would I would put up a fuss, but I I guess that.
You think which is two points?
Yeah, it doesn't. It doesn't bother me.
None of this is sacrosanct. You are allowed to revise, edit, and reshape this, you know, to your will, so don't be bashful if there are things you would like to see added, revised, or removed.
Well, let's let's get back to James's point of looking at the 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 majority.
Right, making these bonus points under job creation be some sort of percentage of the base points that you got for the number of jobs created.
Does that get just too complex with percentages and whatnot, or is it?
I I can do the math, but we might want to actually pick a number and then do the math to see if it works out.
If it does, then numbers could be assigned.
Yeah.
Yeah, you you could just say, you know, rather than two-thirds, if ten or more, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, just just define them.
Just define the number of that.
Define the ranges.
I'm not saying that's the right number, but.
Well, if we just said an additional bonus points of an additional twenty-five percent, if, you know, say, it could be, I would think it could be a percentage of the base points on each of these.
Right.
Which isn't too complicated.
No, but it would mean that for a for a small employer who's going to have only two jobs or four new jobs, they they wouldn't get bonus points, basically. You know what I mean? If you had it as twenty-five percent for a livable wage, and they had, well, I'm creating four new jobs, they're all livable wage. Well, twenty-five percent of four is one. So I guess they could get one point, but if it was three jobs and twenty-five percent of that is less than one, you wouldn't get any bonus points. Just depends where you set the percentage.
You'd get a part of the bonus.
I suppose we could have them be additive, yeah, and they are actually additive, so that that would work, yep. So you'd get a little bit for livable wage, a little bit for.
So you could have parts of a point.
Fractions, right, fractions that add up on your, no, that's true. Well, I can, if if everybody thinks that makes sense, so that we're incentivizing employ and jobs that are have more numbers, I can rework that.
I'd like to do that.
I was on the side in the committee, Dan might remember, saying, most of the jobs, you know, most of the new businesses we have are small. We got to make sure. And I think several people looked at me and said, Alex, that's not true. What about Vermont Smoking Cure? What about? Well, they did when they started.
Right.
That changed.
They have a lot less.
But no, I mean, they I I'm copying to the fact that they, the folks in the committee gave several examples of new new businesses that had quite a number of employees, so it's not just the, you know, the the two-person operation that's starting up in Heinsberg.
Is this a planning process to to on you primarily to to put this in a presentable form that is then presumably approved by the select?
Uh, it would become a zoning regulation revision that you guys would hold a public hearing on, and then it would go to the select board. Yeah, so this needs to get dropped into the zoning regulations as a new section somewhere.
Okay.
With language similar to this?
Yeah, with this with this language is what I'm proposing unless it based on however you revise it. Yeah. Yep.
So that's going to look very different than a lot of the zoning regulations.
It sure is.
Talk about distances and heights.
It sure is, yep. It'll be it'll probably be its own section or article in the regs, and it's going to reference the ordinance that will provide the framework for this and all of that jazz.
And this is the way to make it effective by building it into the zoning.
That's how Williston did it, and we're trying to emulate their their the way they did it. Yeah, they have it in their zoning.
Our fathers over in Montpelier are fine with this. We can include this in zoning regulations?
It's it's it was our understanding from talking to Williston that that is the way that they felt was the most the most legally defensible was to have it in the zoning and not have it be part of the select board's allocation ordinance that because it's in the zoning, it ties back into the town plan and and, yeah, it sort of works. Plus, it allows the DRB to do it then, just as a part of their process. But do the scoring and essentially decide who gets the allocation every year, yeah. But I think that we will certainly get our town attorney to review this, should we get to the point where it's all put together and and, you know, the select board actually wants to go forward with it.
Because it can be a very important thing for a developer if it's, you know, I got thirty-five points and those guys got thirty-seven points, and we disagree with why they should. You know, it could turn into.
Yep, it could.
A question that that locally we couldn't answer. It would have to go through legal.
Yes, this is America. We can always be sued.
Right, right.
And we can always sue. So Totemon Sekutter, do you have ten minutes worth of information to give us on the Starkspurrow zoning change?
No.
Okay, so let's go until eight-thirty and see if we can maybe at least get halfway through this.
Okay.
But, you know, not wanting to.
James's suggestion for job creation percentages for bonus points.
The way it is right now and how hard it is to find people.
Yeah, right.
A lot of companies are automating. I mean, we we automate some.
Well, people are robots. Did you say robots there?
Yeah. Yeah, twenty points for.
My opinion is I wouldn't give any bonus points for minimum wage jobs. Just, there's so, I mean, you can get that job anywhere. It's the livable wage jobs that are hard to find.
Well, that's an interesting suggestion.
I mean, I mean, I don't know if you guys, I mean, every business is looking for work.
The unemployment rate is inescapable.
I mean, not to be mean, but if someone's not working.
Sandwich boards out everywhere saying, you know, applications, come on in, take, you know, fill it out. We we need work.
I mean, the only way we're getting people is we're stealing them from other companies and giving them a little wage. I mean, that's what's happening.
Yeah, somebody who's already knows that work. They don't have to train.
So is that what the situation is going to be fifteen years from now?
Who knows?
Exactly.
Yeah, I.
It's what it is right now, though, and it's dire.
I bet it is. I mean, people are having less kids. Everybody's getting older. I.
It's going to get tighter.
That's right. They want us old guys still to work.
That's right.
Yes.
Remember, it's so unfair.
So Dennis, to to put what you're saying in the form of like a, hey, I would change this, is it sounds like what you're saying is, don't maybe don't make living wage be a bonus point. Make it a prerequisite to get any of these points to begin with. Like, if a business comes in and says, I'm going to create seven new jobs, and they say, but they're all going to make minimum wage, we would say, thank you, but you don't get any points at all for that. Is that what you're saying?
That's my opinion, okay.
I would. I agree with Dennis. I would go with that.
Although.
Dan, did you guys get into that kind of discussion?
Well, I mean, we definitely wanted to make it a point of the jobs that were going to be created were livable wage.
Yeah.
The the problem is looking at the the priority business sectors, sectors, agriculture, food, wood products. I mean, those are areas that are, you know, struggle to.
I can tell you that in wood products, we're.
You're doing fine, so.
We're paying livable wage or more to people just to get them.
Agriculture, I think.
Ag is probably.
One in restaurants.
Smoking Cure isn't, right? That's that's an example of a business that we celebrated coming to Heinsberg. It's related to the food sector. It created new jobs and actually got money from us through the state because they were making some new jobs that were going to be available to low and modern income folks. But I'm pretty sure they pay pretty close to minimum wage or thereabouts. So, you know, we just have to be ready if we make that jump.
incentivize them to pay more.
Well, I'm just saying, we'd have to we have to be ready if if a project like that were to come for allocation and be competing against some other residential project.
From somewhere else, though.
What's that?
I mean, they can get their points from somewhere else.
They could. I think Andrew Frost, who was on the Economic Development Committee and was representing that committee on this allocation committee, was worried that it would be easier for residential developments to get points, and and we argued, no, we've we've built in, you know, job creation is one of the ways that a non-residential project can get those points. So the harder we make it for a non-residential project to get job creation points, the more we will be favoring residential developments that can do affordable, that can do, I don't know, public infrastructure that sort of naturally goes with their projects. That sort of thing.
But we also have in our regulations, you got to have so much commercial and.
Yeah, in our purpose purpose statements, we talk about the mix. We haven't quite defined any hard and fast percentages yet, but I'm happy to change this to, you know, to be, it's not just any old new job. It's a new job that pays at least so much. So if that's where you want me to rewrite, I can do that.
Yeah, why don't why don't you do that? And then we'll look at it again and see if.
We could incentivize the residential side by saying how many children you have.
That's right.
The more children you have, the less points you get.
No, it's exactly the other way around.
I remember one time.
We need more kids in this town.
All right, any other, any other comments on the?
We take points.
Any other comments on the job creation section?
No.
Oh, we didn't.
Move along, Matt.
All right. All right, let's take a look at housing. Is that next? Yeah.
I made one comment in there. I think you guys could probably read it. No, which.
Senior housing?
Yeah. Yeah, and one could say, hey, that could apply to housing of all kinds, you know, that they're proximate to. But this kind of segregation of housing, you know, we we certainly always talk about it when it comes to affordable and making sure that it's part of the mix. And senior housing, I guess, is in part in that category, but incentivizing sort of the co-location of senior housing with other amenities or other kinds of housing types, I thought was something we might think about.
I would support doing that if we can figure out a way to to do it.
I like the fact that this the scoring system, the word perpetually affordable housing has been defined so that those houses will stay available. You mean they don't have to if they are in the beginning now? Is that what you mean? Is that what that means? Like, say, over here on Green Street, Alex?
Yeah.
So they have some affordable housing, right?
Yes, lots. It's all rental, isn't it?
Yes, but still affordable rents, which that's another whole subject. But don't they have to stay that way? Or is it only initially? Is that what you mean?
Perpetually. Yes, they they stay that way.
They stay. So we've already had that, and this is just redefining it?
Well, it's just codifying it.
Codifying it.
Some some areas, affordable housing is good for ten years.
Oh, really?
Or twenty years, and then and then it's no longer needs to be.
Ah.
So by using the word perpetual, we mean.
Yeah, so.
It's a forever proposition.
I thought that it had to stay that way. That's why I'm asking the question, so, yeah, okay.
So that, so I I got your comment, Rolf, and I'm thinking maybe that might be a a bonus point opportunity because the the base points here are pretty cut and dry based on numbers. And then it's the bonus points where there are four or five categories of them that that allow you a little more creativity.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep, you didn't mention skier housing, but.
You really think it's going to take fifteen minutes to talk about schedule changes?
Uh, at least at least seven minutes.
Seven?
Yeah.
And ten seconds.
Okay.
I like your clock management, Maggie.
Yeah, clock management skills. I'm not hearing a lot of noise. Do we like the housing section? Are we comfortable with that?
I thought it was pretty good. Yeah, just with the addition of senior housing along with other activities.
Was somebody from the housing affordable?
Yeah, Carl.
Carl was the representative from the Affordable Housing Committee.
Very knowledgeable, isn't he, on this front?
Oh, yeah.
He sure is.
Did some of his stuff originate with him and?
Oh, yeah.
He's retired now, right?
He is. He's got all the time in the world.
Yeah, I saw you at dinner with him. For heaven's sake, man.
I have a question about if your bonus points, greater affordability. If something is fifty percent of the median income and gets one bonus point, and something's thirty percent and gets two, can you explain why the fifty percent doesn't get two points and the thirty percent get one point?
Oh, I understand what you mean. So the definition that it lays out in here of what affordable housing is is that it has to be affordable to somebody making eighty percent of the median income for this area. So what this is saying is that if you make it affordable to somebody earning fifty percent of the median income, meaning it's an even lower. of the median income, meaning it's an even lower price, you get more points. And if it's even more affordable, because somebody earning as little as thirty percent of the median income, then you get even more bonus points. The problem is that, um, this is what Champlain Housing Trust tells me, is, is that the, the eighty percent number, what a, what, somebody who earns eighty percent of median in Chitting County, where incomes are fairly high, um, is, is not what's in their portfolio. Most of the, the housing in their portfolio is down at the sixty and below uh, range, affordable to somebody earning sixty percent of the median income or below, and that's where they like to get to, and so we wanted to recognize the state definition of affordable, but then also give bonus points if you could get it down even further. The, the only way that happens is with, is subsidies and, and, and grants and funding, I mean, market rate housing cannot even deliver um, eighty percent affordable so much, it may be a couple years. The, the funding? No, usually it's all a package deal that's been put together and.
They know upfront?
Yeah, yeah, because they can't really, they can't really proceed without all those things coming together. And it's complicated, usually involves, you know, four or five different kinds of funding sources, from low-income housing tax credits to community developed block grants to what you name it.
They, they're groundbreaking, it's like twenty people all with shovels, representing different sources of funding.
They just had a picture in the paper of that over on, uh, the Cambrian Rise pro, project on North Avenue Burlington, that their first affordable units are opening up, and it was exactly like that, there must have been twenty people across the room.
Everybody who put money in wants to be in that picture.
Or who helped get, yes, yeah.
Do you think affordable housing should be different between renting and owning?
No, uh, there's, uh, there's a need for both, um, and according to the Housing Needs Assessment that we did, um, Heinsburg is deficient on the rental side, more so than the ownership side. We have so many single-family homes out there, and so little in, in the way of apartments, um, that that's where the consultant said we should focus, is more of, more of the rental.
Similar to the jobs, um, you know, I wonder if this, uh, so let's take the eight-point bonus, seventy-five percent of new homes to affordable housing.
Yeah.
So if it's three out of four homes, they would get eight points, or if it's seventy-five out of a hundred, they would get eight points. Should we incentivize more, a larger amount of affordable homes, affordable apartments?
Maximum points in that area of housing needs is fifteen. The most they could get with seventy-five percent is eight points, half, half of what the maximum could be.
It, it's surprising, the maximum points fifteen, as John pointed out, and yet, for seventy-five percent of the new homes perpetually affordable, they only get eight points.
They only get eight points.
And just looking back at some of the others, job creation maximum points fifteen, and then the, the highest, you know, they can get there is twelve points before you get into the bonus points, and, um, public infrastructure, maximum twenty-five, and the highest you can get is twenty before you get into the bonus points. Why, why was affordable housing, why, why is the maximum that you can get?
Why is so much of the points wrapped up in the bonus points instead of in that sort of base calculation?
Because, I mean, imagine a project that's seventy-five percent.
Right, it's like, why, why wouldn't we give that the maximum right, right there?
Right, right.
I, I, I don't know, Dan, do you remember? I just don't remember why the points got scaled in this way for this particular criteria, so I'm, I'm happy to rejigger it if you want it, but Dan, do you remember?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. Exactly, yeah, I know, like, towards the end, a little bit, I think maybe we're trying to just make the numbers work, so, um, maybe some of the the weight of the points could be adjusted a little bit.
I think, now that I'm looking at it again, I think part of it was that this category is affordable and senior housing, we wanted to incent, give, give projects points that did both of those things, but we couldn't come up with a way, a nice, uh, objective, just numbers-based way to do both of those in those base points, so those base points are all just about affordable. And then the bonus points get you into the senior, and so I think maybe we left a lot of points left to get in the bonus so that we could get senior housing, um, as well, so.
But again, so we're basically only given seven points for senior housing, if you look at it that way. I mean, I, I wonder if there's a way to do it alternately, you know, um, maximum twelve points for seventy-five percent, yada, yada, or?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure in earlier iterations, we did have it, and it was very confusing to get all the, all the, think about all the permutations you could have, like seventy-five percent affordable, and twenty-five percent senior, or twenty-five percent affordable and fifty percent senior, it, it's like there's an endless combination of, of, uh.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I mean, I, I, um, I don't wanna second-guess the, the work that was done by the committee, because it was a really solid committee, met for almost a year, twelve meetings, you know, I, I, I put a lot of weight into, into the work that went into this, and clearly, a lot of work has gone into this. So I, you know, I, I, pardon me, I, I hesitate to rehash their conversations, um, if, if you say that they, they've already been through those iterations of, of, uh.
They have, but it's not, like I said, it's not, uh, nothing is cast in stone.
No, I, I get that, but.
One way to make this easier might be to separate this into two different criteria, and say, affordable and senior are not the same thing, and we're, it, right now, there are six categories to get points in, maybe there's, maybe it should be seven. And affordable should be one, and senior should be a different one.
But, but then fifteen each, because that could mess things up.
We would have to figure out how to restructure the points, there's no cap on the number of points you can, we can have the system add up to, uh.
I like those combined, the way that it is now.
You think that works?
Yeah, I do. I, I agree with what you said too, Maggie, um, you know, a lot of hard work's been done on this, and I don't really wanna tear it apart very much.
It's like what it does to us all the time.
Oh, no, but.
Right.
You know, true.
Yeah, well, they talked about your official map la, uh, Monday night, and they didn't tear much.
No, I watched that.
I think they were tired. I think it helps putting something in the water, for sure.
Make them talk about ambulances first.
I was really, it was quiet. Anyway, um, I don't know, I like the two together, I think they, they really do fit.
Well, but would you like there to be more points in that base sort of, you know, for affordability, instead of going from zero to eight and then getting the bonus, do you want it to go maybe zero to twelve, and the bonuses, you know, rack up after that?
But that like scrunches up senior, senior housing, right?
Sort of. When we were talking about it, we, now that I think about it more, is we wanted to, uh, I guess, give, make it easier to get points for the affordable housing.
Rather than the senior?
Yeah. And then, that's why we left so much room to act, to get the points for the, the senior housing.
Well, you know, if, if, if Carl was comfortable with this.
He was.
And he's a senior.
Yep, retired senior.
I won't divulge, but I, he told me how old he was, yes.
Okay, all right.
He qualifies.
Not on camera.
I said I wouldn't say. I'll say I was surprised when he told me, that's not true.
Um, okay, then I am not gonna press on that, I, I, uh,
I put a lot of weight into what the committee has done.
So, do you wanna cap it there and, and talk about the rest next time?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
That's good, good progress.
So.
All right.
Even though we supposedly stopped talking on this subject, Carl is saying this is good for senior housing in Heinsburg.
For both, both for affordable and senior.
But particularly for senior housing, he's saying, yeah, this works to get more senior housing, as opposed to having them two separate categories, two separate.
Yeah, it's a good question, John, I don't know that the committee actually talked about splitting them into two separate categories, I know that we had a lot of categories, and we did winnowing and collapsing, and so I, I don't remember if that specific question was, was asked, or if it, if it just happened that way, and then, you know, Carl and others felt like it was reasonable, but in the end, yeah, he felt it was reasonable.
I mean, what, what, what we're saying, I think, is that we want affordable housing, and we also want senior housing.
Yes, and we also want affordable senior housing.
Right, and we want the combination.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then, schedules.
Okay, so, um, here's the problem, as it happens most Novembers and Decembers, your second meeting in both months is problematic because of holidays. Maggie and I decided to make your first meeting in November problematic too, because neither of us will be here due to conferences and the like. So, um, we were discussing the possibility of moving the November meetings entirely, um, and what other dates might work. Uh, and my suggestion, I've, I've looked at the dates that this room is available, so that it can still be recorded on V-Cam, um, and my suggestion, if, if it works, if people are amenable, would be to ho, hold the November meetings on October thirtieth and November twenty-first. And those are, sorry, I should tell you what days of the week those are, October thirtieth is a Wednesday, it's the fifth Wednesday of October, it's like an extra, extra Wednesday, which is kinda nice, so, um, and.
Thursday?
November twenty-first is a Thursday. It's the third Thursday. November is really hard, the Select Board and other committees are, they're having lots of meetings, so to be in this room, it's hard to find days, but I do have others if those two don't work. But that's my question to you, would those two day, two dates work instead of November thirteenth and twenty-seventh?
October thirty-first?
Thirty.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, excuse me.
Yep, and November twenty-first. Which is a Thursday.
Okay, it works for me.
It works for me. Seventh and ninth, same, same time.
Same time, yep. Does it work for you, Maggie?
It does. Um, twenty-first, yes. Yes.
I can't say, I didn't bring my calendar.
Okay. Well, we need, we need at least one more person to say it works for them, because right now we have four.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it'll work for me.
Okay. With, with you and Dan, that, that makes five. Dennis, do you have a sense for that, or?
It should be all right.
I avoided DRB night, so.
But I am traveling, so.
Right, your schedule is, it's been crazy for a while now.
What's the November day?
November twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
What about you, Marie, do you know your calendar?
Yeah, I'm okay, I think I'm, I, I don't have my calendar, but I really think I'm pretty flexible.
Okay, well, I think that's, that'll, that'll, we'll have quorum then, so, if that's all right with all of you, that's, I'll, I'll make that known.
I think that was seven minutes.
Well, we have December.
Yeah, so, so my, my suggestion in December, and Maggie may overrule me, because she wants to be productive, but the, the December eleventh meeting is fine, that's your, that's your first meeting in December, second Wednesday, normal. The, the second meeting in December would fall on Christmas, so I'm assuming that's not, not gonna work. My suggestion would be to just cancel that meeting and just have one meeting in December and not try to reschedule it, but if you would like to try, I will, I can bring up the Google Calendar and we can, we can try.
Oh, sure, we can fit in two or three more meetings in December, come on, people.
I'm agreeing with Alex.
Sorry, Maggie.
I, I'm gone for the whole, half of the month.
Uh-huh.
I'm gone the first two weeks.
Of December, cancel.
Apparently.
You typically do, I mean, you, usually, usually that second meeting, someone gets canceled.
I know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Sort of, kidding.
Okay, very good.
Okay, the eleventh.
I'll send a, I'll send an email out, just so you can all have a reminder to adjust your calendars for November, and and that way I can let V-Cam know as well.
So in December.
Thanks, Amelia.
Eleven.
So in December, it's gonna be the ninth?
No, the eleventh.
The eleventh.
On Friday?
No.
No, you must be looking at the wrong year.
Oh, that's twenty-twenty, sorry.
I was looking at his calendar, he's saying, it is on the ninth, what are you doing?
Yeah, she's such an optimist.
It was twenty, it was twenty-twenty.
Planning in twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty.
It's a true.
You're gonna be here?
True plan.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, the eleventh is a second Wednesday, December eleventh.
I just don't know how to work the phone.
I can't do mine on the phone at all either, it's so bad.
This is new, having it on the phone instead of being a piece of paper.
I have it in both places.
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's a Wednesday.
Now, you will have had a meeting the week, just the week prior, so, you know.
We're gonna be really sick of each other by.
Yeah, there will be bad, and there will also be like, do we have enough prog, forward progress to actually warrant having more discussion, but I'm sure we have more to talk about.
And you will send out all these dates for us.
Yes, I will email you these dates, uh, tomorrow, so that you don't have to remember all this stuff tonight.
All right.
In twenty-twenty-one, whenever we.
John, you're off the committee then.
Yeah. All right. That was easy, how about minutes? Hours? Looks good to me. I found something confusing, but God knows, I, I couldn't find it now if I tried, um.
The fact that I was absent?
Yeah, right, it's like, why didn't Rolf say anything during that meeting?
I know.
Honestly.
Don't we wish?
We must have put something in his water.
Thank you, Kate, for having such detailed minutes.
Yeah.
Actually, for the, well, for all of it, but.
It's so helpful before a meeting.
The Contractor Yard conversation, I think it's good to have all that in the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was good, Ben, there. More people would come from the town.
All right.
Could we buy bonus points for watching our show?
We could have people, at St. Mike's, we had, like, with the smart board systems where students could actually vote for certain things, and it was getting a little ridiculous, um, okay, so, uh, any changes to the minutes? Anyone wanna add a little drama, a little humorous? No? A motion?
My motion to accept the minutes?
Uh, all in favor? Or actually, how about a second?
Second?
Third? Just kidding. All in favor? I'm standing.
Me too.
Okay, other.
Do you want to have another? Just, is that good time now?
For other business, yes, other business.
I talked with someone who is a former Select Board member in Wallingford, and asked them about their water allocation, and he was like, huh? So, you're right, nobody else in the state does it, but one thing he mentioned that really concerned me was their sewer and wastewater system is in a low point in the town, and when there's a lot of rain, the whole thing floods, and it goes down Otter Creek into Lake Champlain. So, what are we doing? I mean, we're trying to clean it up.
That's an issue in Burlington especially, um, and other places, we don't have that problem currently, because our lagoon-based system has so much capacity, that even though there's a lot of rainwater infiltration that somehow gets into our, our sewer lines when it shouldn't, and so flows during major storms are, are much larger than usual uh, into the wastewater system, there, there's so much capacity in those. There, there's so much capacity in those lagoons that they, they fail but never over top. I don't think we've ever had a discharge like the ones you hear, read about in the press, in places like that. The, the proposed system that we are, if, if we go to bond and it gets passed and we build it, the engineer described it being sized for, uh, just way larger than, than, than flows that we would ever see, for exactly that reason, to make sure that there's, there's, that's not going to happen. So I think we're, I think we're both covered under our current system, and in the future, we're, we're lucky that way.
We do discharge until the whole cloud.
Yes, that's where our, that's where our wastewater goes, but when we discharge it, it's, it's cleaned.
It's been treated.
It, unlike, unlike the Burlington and other systems, when they have a big rain event, and the stormwater systems are part of the sewer system, it just discharges partially or untreated, uh, yeah, septic wastewater, I mean.
Was that, did I correctly read during minutes of a Select Board meeting that only three percent of the phosphorus going into the lake came from municipal?
That is correct.
Yep.
Whereas thirty-eight to forty percent comes from ag, and I think, not as much, but maybe twenty-five to thirty comes from developed areas, like your driveway and the parking lots and all of that.
And yet, we're gonna need to have a ten million dollar bond to upgrade our wastewater.
More than that, isn't it?
Yes.
The town administrator and Select Board are all very concerned that maybe all these monies are being used in the wrong place. Could be much more effective if we helped farmers, you know, and.
Well, that was, that was a, um, that was the Select Board meeting where they invited our elected officials, and it would be, um, a good thing to call or contact our elected officials to, to voice our opinions about that, because, um, that's, that's a very heavy, heavy burden, and, uh, yeah. Alright. Good point. Yep. Okay, um, Starkspur. Let's talk about them.
And this is just the required notice, since we are an abutting municipality, they are, their planning commission is having a public hearing on some zoning changes. They have a unified bylaw, subdivision and zoning in one document. Um, and they're required to notify us. So the hearing is October 17th, and I quickly skimmed what they're doing. I, I didn't see anything that, that, like, would adversely impact the town of Heinsburg, like they're creating some, um.
Nuclear power plant.
Yes, a nuclear power plant on the border, or something like that, or some, you know, shopping district in the most rural part of Starkspur next to Heinsburg.
Annex some part of Heinsburg.
Right, no annexations proposed. I was interested, because I saw that they had done some work on their definitions of contractor yard, and I was like, oh my goodness, maybe we could learn something, and then I read what they had, and no. But, but I, it's all in your Dropbox if you wanna peruse what they're doing.
Yeah, in any case, John, there are more of us than there are of them. We could totally.
We could go stand on the line and.
Yeah.
There is a lot of language in there about electric vehicles and, and charging, requiring charging infrastructure and stuff, which I thought was pretty progressive for little old Starkspur. So, if you're interested in that sort of thing, it is, it is worth looking at what they're proposing.
Speaking of electrical veo, electric vehicles, there was a plan to have electric charging stations, at the fire station?
Yes, we, we.
What's the status of that?
Energy Futures Group, uh, asked us to apply for a grant, 'cause the state's making grants available for those, putting in those stations, and we did, and we didn't get it. Um, so I think the hope was that we would apply again, they continue to offer that up, and maybe get it in another round, but I don't know when the next round is.
So Richard's watching that, and?
That's a good question, John. I, I don't know if he's gonna keep track of that and make sure another application goes in, or if he's thinking we are. I, I'm not keeping track of it, so, uh, if it's important to you, look it up, um, or ping me, and I'll help you look it up, and we can find out what the grant application time horizons are.
And would our town administrator be watching that date?
I, I don't, I can't speak for how much Renee's watching on, on that particular topic, but I know she's got her hands completely full of fifteen other things, so I wouldn't be surprised if that's not something she's actively tracking.
Did the Energy Committee weigh in on that motion?
I don't.
I know Richard came and talked to us about what it was gonna look like.
I don't remember that the Energy Committee had a lot of involvement in that grant application. That would be a logical committee to sort of advocate for that.
They would, if they could watch that and make sure we didn't miss it.
Well, you know Chuck, and, you know, some of the other committee members there. Go, go, go tell them to put it on their radar screen. I just met with them last night, so the, um, they are, they have prepared something that they will be delivering to you. It probably mentions electric charging stations, so. A town plan update is what they're gonna be putting in front of you for the energy chapter of the town plan, not the whole thing.
Okay, people. Anything else of importance? Interest? Alright, that's it. We're done. Thanks a bunch. Thank you, everybody.